Good afternoon. I'd like to call the meeting to order of the City Council Newport Beach, July 9th, 2019, regular meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
I'd like to recognize Reverend James Pike, Lutheran Church of the Resurrection, who will be leading our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Avery.
Let us pray. We give you thanks for this first meeting since our Independence Day, for the unalienable rights you've given to us, including the right to govern ourselves. We thank you for the people elected in this chamber to lead this city, and we ask that you give them wisdom in their work that is ahead of them. We ask for a blessing upon the city staff for joy in all they undertake, and for those who are public servants and public safety, we pray for protection in their work. So we commend ourselves to your blessings, and we ask for your presence here tonight in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Pike. Madam Clerk.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the City Council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
We have a presentation this evening to recognize Ms. Debbie Brastek of Newport Harbor High School for her efforts with the high school mentorship program. Is she in our audience today? Would she like to come forward? I want you to stand right here, and I will read a proclamation that we have prepared in your honor. Whereas Newport Harbor High School One-to-One Junior Career Mentor Program began 23 years ago, and the mentor family consists of approximately 250 caring and successful community professionals in a myriad of careers in and around the Newport Beach area, and the mentor program runs from late spring of the sophomore year through the spring of the junior year, during which the students and their mentor will have had six meetings and spend a minimum of 15 hours together over a period of nine months. And whereas Debbie Brastek has ably led and run this special program for about 15 years and has sought no personal recognition for her hard work and accomplishments, and whereas Debbie's daughter Jessica is now one of the many former mentees who has now become a mentor. Now therefore I, Diane Brooks Dixon, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Debbie Brastek and the Newport Harbor High School Mentorship Program for their outstanding contributions to the health and well-being of our community. So thank you, Ms. Brastek. If you'd like to make a few comments, we'd like to honor you this evening.
Thank you. I will just say one thing. It's very kind of you to ask me here, and Brad Avery has been a mentor for many years. Will came on a few years ago, and now Joy Brenner threw her hat in the ring, and so we're getting her through the clearance process right now. But it's such a wide range of community members, and it's really the mentors, the people who give their time to this program, and I'm the one that's blessed by it, by connecting the giving, caring people in our community to these young ones right at the pinnacle of trying to make that decision of what's my next step? College, work, majors, everything feels like a weight on their shoulder, and it's like Joy and I were talking today. They listen to their mentors often more times than they will a parent. It just feels so much more relaxed, so much less pressure on them. And so they go on, and they're successful, and they stay in touch. I bring them back, as my own daughter, who's now an attorney, and still has her mentor in her life, and it goes on and on. So for 23 years, we have kids coming back and telling stories, and adults and alumni. So it's a gift to the community and a gift to the kids, and I'm grateful to be a part of it. Thank you.
Well, we're grateful. Our community solutes you, so thank you for your noble work. So why don't we come over here? Oh, excuse me, Mayor Protem, would you like to make a comment, and maybe Mr. Avery would as well? Go ahead.
Do you want to? I mean, you've got seniority on me, so.
No, I would just say that it's just such a rewarding program for the mentors, and it really keeps us connected to the community and to be able to advise, but more often than not, learn some things from juniors in high school. And it's a pretty impressive group of young folks we have in this community that never ceases to amaze me with what they're following and tracking on. I think they're underestimated sometimes, and so it's good to sort of be up to speed on that. Thank you so much.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I'll just say, there have been a couple of times this last year where the students, some students made news. And I'll just say, there were a lot of people who made the comment, well, where are the parents? What's going on? And one of the questions I used to ask folks when they would, that would come up in conversation is, well, what are you doing about it? And I can tell you that one of the things you can absolutely do about it, and getting involved in a really positive way with a lot of our folks in high school, is get involved with the mentorship program at Newport Harbor High School. Truly, one of the great events we have in this city is the lunch at the end of the program, where all of the mentors and all of the mentees go over and have lunch together, and you really get a sense of what this community is about at that moment. So I just want to say, you know, we know how hard it is to pull together a handful of folks in high school and a handful of people who are working, and Debbie does it with over 200 people every year. So as you're getting ginned up for the, you know, for the next round, I'll just say, I actually spoke to my mentee this morning. I've got a lunch set up because, as he said, Ms. Brastek told me I needed to.[422.41][422.41](laughing) And so we've got that going. So I just want to say, thank you, Debbie. This is, it's a really big impact that you have on our community, and I guess one of the great things is you'll never know how positive it really has been. So thank you.
Why don't you come over here, and we'll have a photograph taken, and Brad and Will. It's always wonderful to recognize our community volunteers. Now we have the Orange County Human Relations, and let me get the information here, their presentation of their annual report. We have Mr. James McQueen and Ms. Malik Minza, board members of OC, Orange County Human Relations. And so, thank you for coming this evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, Ms. Long, Chief John Lewis, and community members. My name is Minza Malik. I actually work at Hoag Hospital. I'm part of the Melinda Hoag Smith Center for Healthy Living, so that's why you might recognize me. But today I'm here on behalf of OC Human Relations, where I'm a board member.
And I'm Jim McQueen, a Newport Beach attorney who's also a board member.
So we're here tonight to report on some of the work that OC Human Relations has done over the past year with the City of Newport Beach. We've also provided you with our annual report, and we wanted to share our work. We believe that all people have a right to live free from discrimination and violence, so we provide programs to create safe and respectful communities. Our mission to build understanding among our diverse residents is more important now than ever. We continue unfortunately to see divisions and strife among leaders and neighbors locally and across the nation, but that has not deterred us from even working harder with our communities as well as schools in helping us build bridges of understanding. OC Human Relations partners with cities, and we take our partnerships with our cities very seriously because we feel that that is the basis of our community. And we continue to work with our schools as well as our police and community organizations. Cities and schools call us, call on us regularly for help in community building efforts as well as navigating conflict, and we hope that the City of Newport Beach will not hesitate to reach out at times when our expertise could help. Many of our programs are provided countywide and beyond. This year, we had a No Hate Public Awareness and Education campaign that expanded statewide, and it included tools and training material for not only cities but counties, schools, as well as other nonprofit organizations. And by launching this, we were hoping to not only raise awareness but have a methodology for our community members to really be able to navigate through this difficult time.
Our programs help the, and we work with the entire county, and we help the entire county, mostly kids, understanding the value of diversity and so forth. But we also do specific things that impact Newport Beach, California. I have a few examples of those for you. We, OC Human Relations mediated 33 cases involving a resident of the City of Newport Beach in the court system. We collaborated with the Newport Beach Police in documenting a hate crime and a police-community reconciliation case. We have 693 youth from this community who participated in our Bridges Safe Respectful School Program. The name kind of says it all. We have 29 students who participated in our day-long Walk in My Shoes symposiums at UCI and Cal State Fullerton, again, from Newport Beach. And they, in those programs, learn about respect, tolerance, and making a difference in school and the community. We also have three youths who attended our Youth Leadership Institute, and four who participated in our year-long Human Relations Ambassador Program. We have a lot of programs reaching out, as I said, mostly to the kids in our community. And we worked hard to build a sense of community among Newport Beach residents and staff through our continual hate crime education and victim outreach and support. In conclusion, OC Human Relations has appreciated Newport Beach's membership in the City Dues Program of our organization. And as a result of that program, we bring police and diverse residents together to build safe, respectful neighborhoods. We develop positive relationships among the broad spectrum of Newport Beach residents. We address community conflict and strife, excuse me, and we sustain a human relations infrastructure that hopefully you don't need very often, but to serve cities when crises and situations involving crisis arise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Together, we are contributing to a safe and respectful county and building the important relationships that can be called upon in times of tension and turmoil. And that's why I'm also so grateful for Hoag, who looks at a healthy community beyond access to just medical care. We look at organizations such as OC Human Relations and other social services that help really build a community as well as provide resources and social support to help the communities grow. If the mayor would like to come forward at this point, we wanted to present you with a certificate of appreciation as well as our continued support for the work that we do here and in other cities. And once again, thank you for your time.
That was a lovely recognition for the city. Now is the time for City Council announcements, new items, council members would like to be introduced for future agendas, and oral reports from City Council on committee activities. Mr. Avery.
Thank you, Mayor. I have none, but I will need to recuse myself from Consent Item 11 for, because my property is near some impending wee debate.
Okay. Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the weekend, I enjoyed having a new baby granddaughter. On July 5th, 1:30 in the morning, Peyton Palmer Duffield was born at Hoag Hospital, and we're very, all healthy, everything's good.
Oh, congratulations.
Very fun. That makes number four for me. It's kind of crazy. And I noticed the, my June gloom didn't get on the agenda, so I'm a little upset about that because it's still pretty gloomy out there.
But then right after you announced that, or asked for that, we had sunny days for a few days.
Just the afternoon.
Yeah. Well, keep working on that.
Mornings are still bad.
Keep working on it.
And is this, I don't, you'll call again for these consent items.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Walden.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Laura Detwiler and Parks and Recs for our great Fourth of July. I'd also like to thank the Police and Fire for our safe Fourth of July. My wife and I, with our son Cannon, attended the Mariners Parade, is that the correct term for it? And it was fun to go out and see what happens when a group of parents get together and organize something because I can't believe how many bounce houses there were. But we also had a little bit of an earthquake that I'm sure most of you felt, almost felt like about a minute, and I realize how unprepared I am at my, at my house, but also made me think about the city again. I know that I had previously asked for an A1 Agenda item on the earthquake notification technology that we had a study session on as well, but this time I basically would like to have a staff report that we can vote on. It's because that was about a year ago when we discussed the technology. It gives about up to 60 seconds head time for fire doors to open when the first detection senses earth movement at one of the epicenters, normally at far distance from the city. So I would like to have that relooked at, and also include the fact that Santa Monica and Beverly Hills have implemented this technology. So I think it'd be nice if we're the first city in Orange County to do so. That's it. Thank you.
That's good. Well, to follow up on that, I also, I know that the city has, the employees are all part of a very well-organized and well-processed emergency preparedness in the event of earthquake or any major disaster. I've asked the city manager also to allow us to be reminded of what our city council duties are in the event that we are here in City Hall or we're not here, and we need to be here in the event of emergency. I think it's good to refresh all those responsibilities. So thank you for reminding us. Ms. Brenner.
Yes. So Diane and Jeff and I have had two bid ad hoc committee meetings, and that item will be coming back to the City Council later this month so that we can expand the scope of that committee to also include discussion about the merchant associations. So that's been a really interesting process. I also did a tour of the undergrounding in Newport Beach with city engineer Mike Sinekori. He showed me the undergrounding progress in Corona Del Mar in our assessment district, and then took me down to the peninsula and showed me the amazing difference that I see down there and how it really has upgraded that community so much. It's beautiful down there. And Jeff and I also met with the board members and director of the Discovery Cube to see the proposed plans for the development of the Ocean Quest Project at the Old Fun Zone. This is a beautiful project that will start to, they'll be getting out into the community to show the community what they have in mind there. So that was really interesting. Diane and I spent several hours on the Fourth of July in the Old Glory Boat Parade. We got to be in the parade and wave our flags, and it was really fun, so we had a good time doing that. I had an introductory meeting with Tim Steed of the Orange County Public Employees Union. I also met with Ken and Derek Percern, who, regarding the new plans for the Coal Center project, which are still in the development stage, they were asking me about how they could get out into the community and talk with the community members and really make this a collaborative project so that the community would be, would be interested in helping them come up with a plan that we could all approve of. And then I'd like to remind everyone that on July the 20th, at 10 o'clock in the morning, there will be a grand opening ceremony for the new Corona Del Mar Library and Fire Station. This is something that our community is so proud of, and we hope everyone comes out to celebrate with us. And that's it.
Mr. Hurdman.
Yeah, we, excuse me, when I say we, all of us up here today, received an email update from Larry Fort Mueller today, who is a Newport Beach citizen and resident, and he is very involved in, in his, on his own time in the Red Cross. And he sent us all an email today that I want to read to you real quick. As you are aware, we've experienced two significant quakes in Southern California and many aftershocks over the past few days. Senator in Ridgecrest, these quakes have caused significant damage, and the Red Cross is responding. Here's the latest information I've been able to gather. The reason I'm reading this to you is because should Newport Beach be another Ridgecrest someday, you'll know what to expect from the Red Cross organization as far as services to our city. Red Cross disaster workers have a shelter open in Ridgecrest where hundreds of people have found a safe place to stay since the earthquakes began. The shelter, he just gives the address of the shelter. We have local desert-to-sea region volunteers who've traveled to Ridgecrest and surrounding areas to assist with relief efforts. As damage assessment continues, the Red Cross is providing comfort and care, including safe shelter, warm meals, and emotional support. The Red Cross Shelter will remain open as long as necessary. In addition to the Red Cross Shelter, volunteers are also out in the community, driving throughout affected areas in Red Cross response vehicles, providing meals and water to those who will need it. This is, then there's more, but I won't read it all. This has been another not-so-subtle reminder that we are always subject to the whims of nature and preparedness, and planning makes all the difference. So I just wanted to share that with you as a very blunt reminder to all of us.
Be prepared.
Be prepared, right.
Did you have any other announcements?
That's it.
That's it? All right. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, just a couple. I'll echo the thanks to Laura Detwiler and her team on the Mariners Park Parade. Just love that thing, especially all of the bicycles at the very end. Celebrated Ben Carlson Day, the fifth anniversary down at the, with the Newport Beach Junior Life Guards. Thank you so much to the Carlson family, who continued their tradition of making sure that our lifeguards have lunch, and then also got to see all of the junior guards compete in the run swim, swim-run-swim event. So I almost said that backwards. And then, just a quick reminder, July 22nd, we have our Homeless Task Force here at Newport, at City Hall. You can come and observe and make public comments if you'd like. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. I have a few, some of them are repetitive, but they're always good to recognize. Our Parks and Recreation and Senior Services, and Laura Detwiler, and the police, and my July 4th began with our, July 4th is for families on the Baboa Peninsula with a little parade from 36th Street, 38th Street to Channel Island Park, and it, and it was just amazing. There must have been 1,000 residents there, and so it's just a tribute to, there's a volunteer committee, and I often talk about how our city, and these events are really not possible without the volunteers of our residents in our community and the hard work of our city staff. So that began my July 4th, followed by the Mariners Elementary School Foundation Parade, organized again by volunteers and parents and families, and then followed by our All-American Legion, All-American Old Glory Boat Parade through Newport Harbor. Mr. Borstein, our harbor master, was out there on another boat, so it was a beautiful day. The clouds did clear, the marine layer cleared, and it was just a beautiful day. And then if that wasn't enough, followed by that, then the police chief and I did a ride-along throughout District 1, the peninsula, because it's always been a high area for incidents on July 4th, and actually was, when I was riding from about 6:00 to 9:30, it was, it was manageable. Lot of, lot of coverage by our police, and also Irvine Police was deployed as well. So there were incidents, and I think the same number of arrests from last year, I think 55, the police chief told me. But anyway, it was a great evening to experience our police in action. And the Ben Carlson Ceremony, I was there, that was the next day, or maybe that was Saturday, and that was the fifth year anniversary of his death, and there's a very poignant ceremony at 517, at Tower 17, on July 6th, and so that was a time to reflect on people who have given their lives for our community. Concert on the Green, Sunday night, another hot time in the old town. It was just really, really fun, although it was Country Western was the theme, so maybe it was just really another night for, just enjoying a beautiful night. The clouds did clear, and it was a beautiful night on the green. And I guess, I haven't reported on this, Baboa Island Improvement Association had its quarterly meeting, and so Mr. Hurdman and I were there to answer questions on the General Aviation Improvement Plan, and many, about 150-some residents of Baboa Island come to the quarterly meetings, so they're very well-attended. This was one of many issues on their agenda. And then last evening, Mr. Hurdman, Ms. Brenner, myself, and, and our city manager, attended the Airport Working Group Annual Meeting and Board Meeting at Oasis, about 150, 200 people there last night, to, again, to have an update on the General Aviation Improvement Plan. And so we are doing our best to keep the community informed on this important work that continues as we advocate before the Board of Supervisors in the next phase, and we'll talk a little bit more about that probably later. All right, I think that's it on my announcements. So, do we have any public comments on these announcements? Please come forward. Oh, did I, I forgot to do one more thing. Excuse me. Sorry. City Clerk would like me to talk about, you're going to put a slide up, a new way to vote is coming in, to Orange County in 2020. I've talked about this before. We're communicating heavily on this because this is changing behaviors on how we all vote. So Help Choose a Vote Center Location, visit ocvote.com and click Public Input to complete a brief survey. So this is relating to ballots will be in the next election, starting with the primary? Next March?
Correct.
Next March. So every registered voter will get a mailed ballot, and there'll be 11 days, not just Election Day, but 11 days of in-person voting at these new voting centers to be determined, location to be determined. And you, everyone may vote at any full-service voting center, not even in your neighborhood?
Correct. Anywhere in Orange County, you're allowed to vote.
Okay, vote once, vote often. Vote early, vote often, they say.
Only vote once, though.
In Chicago.[1659.23][1659.23](laughing) So they used to say, that's what they did. They voted early, they voted often. And so people have more convenience, more convenient voting and more choices, and multiple ballots. Okay, so Help Choose a Vote Center Location, go to ocvote.com. All right. Any public comments on these announcements? Please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I did not hear it announced, but our city's calendar online indicates that Mayor Protem O'Neill will be holding office hours tomorrow morning at, from 8:00 a.m. until 10:00 a.m. at the Newport Coast Community Center. I encourage everybody to attend, and I would also encourage the other council members to consider themselves holding office hours at some time. Thank you.
Okay.
I apologize. That's true. So come join Jim and me at my office hours.
Are there free donuts or anything? No. Okay. All right. Madam Clerk. Oh, ma, no, that's me. Excuse me. Matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. And these are not matters for discussion. This is merely to see if three council members would like to discuss the matter at a future date. Do we have three council members to bring back this item, the consideration of forming a Traffic Affairs Committee put forward by Councilmember Brenner? Raise your hand if you agree. This will come back in the form of a staff report at a future council date.
That is unanimous.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Brenner. Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the Consent Calendar for discussion. Those are Items 1 through 16. Public comments are also invited on Consent Calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the Consent Calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under Consent Calendar Items 1 through 16 are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed. on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
All right, any items to pull from the consent item calendar, items 1 through 16? Mr. Avery?
I have none.
Mr. Duffield?
Thank you, Mayor. I need to recuse myself on item number 11 for real property issues. And I, also on number, item 8, I'd like to have a no vote. And that's all.
Mr. Muldoon?
I have none.
Ms. Brenner?
I need to recuse myself on item number 6 because of real property interest.
Mr. Hurdman?
I have none.
Mayor Protam?
I have none.
All right, do we have a motion?
Yep. So just to clarify before I make the motion, there are amendments to item number 1, which are the minutes that are in the packet in front of us and also in the hallway. There is an amended, there is a, an amendment to the ordinance in item number 3 that was also in our packet in front of us and also in the hallway. And, no, let's see, there's a recusal from Councilmember Brenner. I'm sorry, that's part of my motion. And then there was also one clarification on, I believe it's item 8, for our city attorney.
So I just wanted to mention briefly, there's a conflict between the staff report for gen item number 8 and the resolution that's attached there too. And this is for the establishment of a design committee for the proposed Newport Beach Public Library Lecture Hall. And the specific conflict appears on the second page when it's setting forth the criteria for the members. Subpart E says one additional member who meets one of the above criteria but need not be a resident. That's actually conflicts with the resolution, that person does need to be a resident of the city. And then I wanted to mention that Karen Clark is a former member of the Board of Library Trustees as well. So with those clarifications on the staff report, everything's right in the resolution. I just want to make sure it was clear that all the members meet the criteria to be appointed.
Okay.
All right, very good.
All right, so with, I move the balance of the consent calendar with item number 1 amended, item number 3 amended, item number 6 showing a recusal from Councilmember Brenner, item number 8 showing a no vote from Councilmember Duffield, and item 11 showing recusals from Councilmember Avery and Councilmember Duffield.
Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second by Councilmember Brenner. Any council comments? Let's vote. Oh, excuse me, public comments on the consent items.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Item 11, on which I heard that there were two recusals, asks for after-the-fact corrections to a recently expired multi-year, large-dollar amount contract originally approved by the council in 2014. The proposed action has multiple problems, and I hope you will remove this item from your motion and deny the request. Two years ago, staff used this vendor to do some unanticipated work. And in 2018, to cover that cost, our former city manager increased the original dollar amount, the limit, the maximum, to the maximum he was allowed to do without your approval. This year, according to the staff report, staff tapped the same vendor to do still more unanticipated work, inadvertently, we are told, overrunning the staff's contracting authority by $50,000. You are now being asked to extend the expired contract for two months and to increase the payment limit by $50,000, apparently so staff can do what they think they need to do to clean up the mess. The problem with this is that the people who contract with government agencies and the public officials who administer the contracts are supposed to understand that the agency is beholden not to the contractor, but to the public taxpayers whose money is being spent, including strict respect, respect for the limits in the contracts and the rules for making changes to them. This vendor signed an agreement which clearly stated his total compensation for any and all service provided to the citizens of Newport Beach would not exceed $992,150. That is the current and only agreement between the contractor and this city. It was the responsibility of the contractor and the contract administrator to make sure that they stayed within that limit. It is not now your responsibility to make good their deviations from it. Indeed, your responsibility to us, as public officials and guardians of the public purse, is to ensure that the existing promise is adhered to as written. Paying more as an after-the-facts fix-up creates a culture of lax administration, it violates our California Constitution, and in the absence of any legal obligation to pay this $50,000, it would be regarded by many as a gift of public funds. Please pull the item and deny the request, but if you should instead choose to proceed, I would point out to you that in Section 2, at the top of page 11-5, it refers to an Exhibit B purporting to contain a letter proposal, apparently justifying this added expense, and a schedule of rates. And that was supposed to be attached to the amendment, and it is not attached for your review. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Please come forward on the consent calendar items. See, none, bring it back up here. Any other comments? Let's vote.
Actually, I'm sorry. Whenever we get accused of violating the Constitution, it's probably worth asking our city attorney to just briefly respond. And then it might actually be worth asking the city manager also to just reference, just discuss briefly the issue of contract administration.
So, the city council has the ability to basically ratify the expenditure by approving this amendment. It wouldn't be in violation of the California Constitution. I know the provisions that Mr. Mosher is talking about, we've looked at those in depth previously, and I believe that you could legally take action to ratify this expenditure. And I'll turn it over to the city manager to discuss the contracted procedures.
Yeah, very briefly, because I'm not pulling the item, I just want to make sure we're at least clarifying public comment on that one.
Sure, yeah. I'll let Dave maybe just briefly explain the circumstance that was unique to this, but we do take our contract administration very seriously. I will note, this is a five-year contract over that time period with a dollar amount and then just the amount of different work that was happening at that time of what occurred. I mean, it is not something that is regular, that is, does happen in the city, and this is something we, you know, do take very seriously of taking care not to have these kinds of incidents happen again.
And I'll echo that, thank you very much. You don't rarely see an item like this because we are doing, we do really strict contract administration. We usually have contract administrations on the projects. The problem with this particular contract is we phased, we had a new contract coming on board, we had new staff on board, other departments, so we're all asking our contractor outside it to do work, and he obliged to do that, probably verbally. And it got beyond our contract adminster by the time we got the invoice and we caught up to it. Unfortunately, that's what took place here. We are working with those other departments to make sure they go through our PMs before they ask our contractors to do work. And we'll do a better job on that with them.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item 3, ordinance number 2019-11, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach amending sections 10.28.040 and 15.16.010 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to provide a process for homeowners associations to opt out of Saturday construction-related noise regulations and temporary construction project signage requirements. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city councils. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
If we have public comments on the non-agenda items, please come forward. State your name.
My name is Tom Holton. I live at 1430 Newporter Way. I was last here, speaking to the mayor and the council on February 18th. Reason being, although my history here in Newport, I caught my first fish off the Balboa Pier when I was seven years old. That was a long time ago. My dad was one of the project managers for John McLeod of Maco Building Irvine Terrace. I became a Walt Disney Imagineer after my graduate, after graduating UCLA. And I'm a Gold Star family. With that, you consider me a criminal, because I got a notice of violation for some file boxes in my garage. I was on vacation, I found this taped to my door. And this, I met with the community director twice. I'm saying, it basically says that I'm subject to fines accruing at $100, $200, to $500 a day, and civic penalties, because I had some file boxes in my garage. I don't like quoting Frank Zappa, but this is poorly written and randomly enforced. All I want is this to be reworded, so if I'm parking in my driveway, not on the city streets, I'm not subject to $500 a day fines. I was blown off, basically, in February, no one paid attention to me. I'll be back in about six weeks, I'm going on vacation. And I just, this law, it is of the parking standards of residential use, item 20.40.090. That means anybody who's parking in their driveway and has something in their garage is subject to these fines at the whim of the city of Newport Beach. This is wrong, it's an overt violation of my Fifth Amendment rights, and I'm not going away. I'll be back, basically, in about two months. And so, that's it.
So what happened in February? Was this the same incident?
This, nothing's been, I took care of this.
Yes.
I think I terrified the Jonathan Munoz.
And then you got another notice?
No, this is the same one. I took care of it. But I asked, just to tell me, what are you going to do about it? Are you going to just blow me off and say, "Go away"? Are you going to review this ordinance?
Oh, I see. Oh, okay, that's what you'd like us to do.
Yeah, I wanted this to be placed on the agenda, because you can't do anything if it's not on the agenda.
All right, well, I guess I didn't understand that when you presented that in February. We'll look into that. So thank you, Mr. Holton, appreciate that.
I, as the sole owners representative for the school district, I was the sole authorized representative for the $193 million modernization of 28 campuses in Newport Beach and Costa Mesa. So I'm a veteran of hundreds of Brown Act meetings.
Okay.
So I just would like to know, are you going to look at it? Or are you just, give me a notice, say, "Go away, you're bothering us"?
No, you're not bothering us, and we appreciate you taking the time to come and speak this evening, and we'll look into it. Okay, thank you so much. Any other public comments? Please come forward and state your name.
Good evening, my name is Barbie George, and I live in Newport Coast. I understand that there is a committee that has been put together to deal with the homeless situation in the city of Newport Beach. Last year, my daughter, with her own money, paid for some surfing lessons at the peninsula. The conditions there, transients, dog waste, dogs off leashes, and the tent city. And I spoke to the liaison, and the only thing that the person said to me was homelessness is not a crime. And I understand that, I'm not without feeling, I've been homeless myself. However, vagrancy, loitering, open drug use, those are crimes. And my daughter, who just graduated from Coronel Del Mar High School, I had to stand there and stand watch to make sure that she would be safe. I'm a person with a myriad of autoimmune diseases, you can probably hear my voice trembling right now. It's very difficult for me to even leave my home. I have five children. I'm lucky that I'm alive, just with everything that I have to do day to day. And then to see that my neighbors can't go to the dog park right here because there's transients just taking up the entire space, that I've spoken to some of the transients, some of the homeless who stand for eight hours in the sun, eight hours in the sun, I wouldn't be capable to do that. And I've spoken to them, say, "Hey, can, can I help you? Can we go and apply for a job"? I will, and they laugh in my face, laugh in my face because they said they don't, they don't want to work. And I know that's not everyone, I know that 25% of homeless are mentally ill, but that doesn't mean that everyone is. I went two years, two years, with nothing. And now my children can see with hard work that you can be somewhere. We came from the East Coast, 3,000 miles, and I wanted the best for my children, the best for my family, and it's really disheartening. The community on the other side of where I live, St. Mitchell, had a homeless person living in a tree. There's photographs of the hammock that they were dwelling within the community, using the pool, using the bathrooms. We don't know who this person might be. At the Ralphs, there's a person who frequents, they are a registered transient and sex offender. And he sits there watching the children. And I feel that, I understand there's a committee, but I hope there's accountability for that committee and that there's more done than just well wishes. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you so much for coming today to speak. Ms. Long, do you want to speak? And then maybe Mayor Protam can just update, it's a good opportunity, not to do a full update, but just on how we are addressing incidents like this in our community.
Sure, thank you. I know this is a very serious issue in the city. I know we feel very, have concern, but want someone to deal with it very compassionately. And I know, I've heard from all council members about the concern and wanting to come up with real, real solutions to this. And as we know, this is a problem that is not just within our city, but it's regionwide and statewide too, so it has a lot of complexities to it. But with that, we are devoting resources to this now. We do have a full-time homeless liaison officer in our police department who works directly with the homeless individuals in our, in our city. We've also recently increased our contract with CityNet, which is a case management outreach service provider that works directly with our homeless individuals to help provide them access to shelter services, to care and things that they need. I know the challenge to that is, that requires multiple interactions with the individuals. A lot of times, they don't accept assistance on the, on the first time out, you have to have continued contact. So it is frequently a slower process, that takes time to develop a relationship, some trust with individuals to do that. But we are working through with that. And I think with the council's leadership and direction with this task force, I think is really trying to get to coordinate and put together and look at really comprehensive solutions moving forward and attacking it, because there's a lot of different areas to, to really, to tackle, to really get at this. And the other piece for us too, and I know I'm working and interacting with our city managers in our neighboring cities too, to look at regional approaches to this as well to continue on this. And can certainly have, our mayor Protam is the chair of the homeless task force, so he can speak a little bit more to the activities that the task force is doing.
Well, thank you, that was very complete. Mayor Protam, do you want to just add a brief comment?
Yeah, obviously, this is an issue that we can't cover quickly. The last, our very first meeting was two hours at the homeless task force, and we have another two-hour meeting, and we'll be breaking up into ad hoc committees. And so we invite members of the public to come, listen, speak, and interact, especially with our seven, seven citizen members. So we have Councilmember Brenner, Councilmember Avery, and I are on the homeless task force. We had our first meeting last month, we're having our second meeting on the 22nd. And we have seven members of the public who have joined, who are true wealth of knowledge, and they're working through a lot of the private organizations that are doing a lot of the yeoman's work already. And so we're trying to work this through from a whole bunch of different positive solutions. And ultimately, it's a, obviously, it's a challenge, and so we're working, we're working through that. And look, if you see crime, report it. I mean, we've got a 911 number, we also have a non-emergency number that you can always call with the police department. But as far as where we are in terms of the legal landscape, I'll just say, it seems to be shifting constantly with rulings coming down from the Ninth Circuit and various district court judges. And so we're, we're trying very hard, we really are. So I, I know that, I know it's, it can be frustrating, but we, we're, we're working on this from a, as much humanity as we possibly can, because we don't have a homeless problem. We have, you know, 61 individual problems that we're working through based on our last point in time count. So I appreciate your attention and look forward to positive interactions. And just one other quick note, folks, if you're, if you're interacting on this topic on Nextdoor or some other social media, please, please do it positively. I just, I've read the comments on there, and I can't even begin to tell you how frustrated I am sometimes to read some of that stuff. And not only some of the misinformation, but some of the things that are just, it's just, these are, these are people. These are, these are folks that we really got to, we got to work through and get them back up on, on their feet. And it's just, it's disappointing to read some of the comments that we, that I've, that I've seen on there. And so we're, we're neighbors, we're folks, and we're going to be treating people positively and... and helping them get up off the street. So I just, I'll make a plea for, for positive, positive interaction and compassion on this one. Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Brenner, did you want to make a comment?
I wanted to say one quick thing, that I think sometimes when you hear our city staff and us talk about it in a calm, measured way, and talking about how we're dealing with it legally, it appears that we're not as upset and emotional and distraught about the situation as you are. We are just as upset about what it's doing to our community. And we're doing everything we legally can do. We're looking at new avenues and, and anything that we possibly can do. And for instance, there were complaints about the junior guards being negatively impacted by the homeless people who were camping out there and using the restrooms. And Grace was amazing. She, I talked to her about it and about the danger with our kids using those restrooms, and she had some portable restrooms set up for the junior guards within a day. And really, they've, and the junior guards were going under the bridge at Dover to get, on their bicycles, to get to junior guards. And that area has been fenced off now so that homeless cannot live there, and the junior guards can get safely to junior guards during the day. So don't, don't think by the calm and measured response that you hear from us that we're not just as upset about it as you are. And we're doing everything we possibly can do.
Thank you. Good comments. Any other public comments on non-agenda items? Please come forward.
Mayor Dixon, council members, thank you. My name is Michael Garman. I'm the Community Outreach Manager for the Laguna Playhouse Theater in Laguna Beach. I came here tonight first and foremost to thank the city of Newport and the Newport Arts Commission for a recent $6,000 grant, which supported our Theater Reach program, which for 20 years has toured live reenactments of curriculum books in elementary schools throughout Southern California, not just Orange County, but San Bernardino Counties and Los Angeles Counties. And it's been proven year after year as a great way to help students improve their literacy by visualizing stories in new ways and to introduce them to live theater. So thank you for that. And just as we believe it's important to go to local schools to introduce students to theaters, to theater, we believe it's very important to create outings at our theater for students to, the next generation of theatergoers, to, to experience the magic of live theater and the inspiration that it can provide. So in late 2017, we launched the program Theater Hope, which coordinates outings in partnership with local nonprofit organizations, primarily serving children and families in need to come to our theater for free performances. We also reimburse groups for their, for their transportation costs. And for groups that are fall below 200% of the poverty line, we also provide them with a complimentary meal. And this is all done through grants and donations to our theater, and we're very happy to do that. And we believe that in building a coalition of local nonprofits, such as Boys and Girls Club, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and over two dozen others, that we can help provide inspiration and hope and work with these nonprofits that are providing basic services to children in need. So there was, we have a production coming up in October that I think is, will be of particular interest for Newport students that we'd like to coordinate outings for. And that production is called I Never Saw Another Butterfly. It's a story about a young Jewish girl growing up in a concentration camp during World War II. And we think, not only because of the tragedies and examples of tribalism and hyper-partisanship that we're seeing around the world, but also in our backyards, we are also seeing that as well. So we, we think that this, this play will be especially important for Newport students to come experience. And we would love to work with the city, as well as the Arts Commission, to bring students to attend it in October. We do need funding to support this play, but we would also like to give back by providing tickets, as well as a tour of our theater and an opportunity to meet with cast members and learn about the process of producing a play. So if anyone is interested, please contact the Laguna Playhouse, and we'd be happy to schedule that.
Very good. Thank you for coming up and explaining that to us. Thank you. Good luck to you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Ruth Sanchez Kobiyashi, and I live in Newport Beach in Harbor Cove. And I'd like to affirm what this young man just said. I've sat in on the Human Relations Task Force meeting at the district, and this would be right in line with a lot of what they're trying to accomplish. On the homeless issue, I share your compassion and your desire to help each and every person that's living in a homeless state. I also urge you to put as a priority the quality of life of the people who reside in this city. My sister and I drove the bus depot today and counted at least 10, 10 tents. It is growing exponentially. I check on it about every month. I have a family member who found a cap to a hyperdermic needle at the bus depot, excuse me, at the dog park recently. And I just talked to a neighbor today, whose housekeeper who needs to take the bus, because that's how she gets to work and feed her family, can no longer go to that depot because it's not safe. So she has to go to a bus stop closer to Red Onion. So it's a magnet. It's owned, run by the county, I think. I think that land is owned by the Irvine Company. I just wonder what else we, I don't see everything you do behind the scenes, so I don't have access to it. But I would encourage you to do something creative about taking that magnet away. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on non-agenda items? Did you want to say something, Mr. Mayor Protem? Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll come back up here.
Yeah, just real briefly, you're right, Ruth. That bus depot is owned by OCTA. They're leasing it from the Irvine Company. It is policed by the Orange County sheriffs. I strongly encourage every single one of you to reach out directly to OCTA and the county and the sheriffs and ask them what they are doing to help in that area. So I appreciate that. We are in contact with OCTA and the sheriffs. We will continue to be so. But please do reach out directly to the OCTA and the sheriffs and ask them what they are doing about that. So I appreciate your bringing that up.
Okay, now we'll go to public hearing. This is an, item number 17, a 10-year extension to a development agreement for Hoag Memorial Hospital. And I'll turn it over to staff. You have a comment? A staff report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Simone Jurgis, your community development director. With me, I have Chelsea Krager. She's the associate planner that's worked on this project also. We have a brief staff report for you on this development, amended development agreement for Hoag. Just a little bit of history of where we're at, what's happened and where we're going. So back in 1994, Hoag, the Hoag Hospital got a development agreement, and basically that vested rights of development for the Hoag campus. And they got rights to about 1.3 million square feet of additional development of office and medical use. It was a 25-year term on that agreement, and it was to expire on March 16th. We were before you back in, gosh, I think it was in early March, and extended this development agreement because we still had some negotiation to do with Hoag. And, you know, we consider Hoag as a community partner. They're very important to the community. They provide first-class medical assistance, medical services. But, you know, they are asking to extend their development agreement for additional timeframe. They still have about 455,000 square feet of additional, of entitlements that they haven't used. And that is for office medical use. So here's, I have a little image there of the, kind of the Hoag campus. You could see, you could see here to the right is the kind of, we'll call the upper campus, and here is the lower campus. And you could see that it's pretty built out in this area, unless they remove some of the buildings, it'll be hard to develop in that area. So they still have about 455,000 square feet of medical office use to develop. And you could see that lower campus there where you have the surface parking. And that's where, you know, we probably anticipate some future development for Hoag. So Hoag approached us over a year ago and asked to extend their development agreement. Initially, they did ask for a 25-year extension. Through negotiations, we've gone down to a 10-year extension. And with that, with, with extending their development agreement and their vested development rights for an additional 10 years, staff believes and thinks there's value to that. And through negotiation, Hoag has agreed to pay the city $300,000 per year for the next 10 years. And those funds will be applied towards a nonprofit community partner that can operate a future homeless shelter. And as Mayor Protem O'Neill talked about, as chair of the homeless task force, that's something that the task force is, is working on now. So we're, we're securing the funds for this future homeless shelter. In addition, what we've learned is that Hoag, per law, has to provide community benefit, community services. And they actually do that through a center they call the Melinda Hoag Smith Center for Healthy Living. Next line. And what is that? Well, it's, it's really an incredible facility. It's located off Placentia Avenue, and it's a one-stop shop of supportive services. They fund, Hoag funds this center, and this center has arrangements and MOUs with a lot of nonprofit services, a variety of nonprofit that the community can use and utilize. And these are services and resources that can address the root cause of disease and improve health outcomes. Now, this is just a sample. I think there's, they have over 70 members that they've partnered with, and these are all nonprofits. And I, and I've just boxed kind of items that popped out at me that will be applied in supporting our kind of homelessness in the future. You could see there the Hoag Mental Health Center, and they actually have psychologists on staff. And again, these are all nonprofits. And there, the second red box is the SOS Children and Family Health Center to provide supportive services to families. So it's an amazing program that Hoag already operates and runs. And this was part of our development agreement, that they just continue to provide that funding source to support that Melinda Hoag Smith Center, because I think it's a, it's an important component for the future of our community and a huge amount of services that the public can tap into. So that's the framework of our development agreement, and, you know, we recommend just to conduct the public hearing and move staff's recommendation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jurgis. Mr. Hurdman.
I can't think of a better use of developer agreement funds. I'd like to commend Hoag for their creativity here, for making sure that this outstanding center, the Melinda Hoag Smith Center, continues to offer services not only to citizens in our community, but certainly neighboring cities as well. And also, we heard testimony tonight from people in the audience about their concerns about homelessness, and to see some of these funds being earmarked for that is just outstanding. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
I just have a couple of questions on it. Could you go back? I guess, there we go. Okay, so the Melinda Hoag Smith Center partners, these partnerships, they currently operate out of one location?
That's correct.
And that's the location at Placentia?
307 Placentia Avenue. It's actually a standalone building.
Standalone building, okay. You don't have visual of that by chance, do you?
That's the entry.
The building, no.
That's the entry, yeah.
No, sorry. That's the picture there, that's the lobby area where they have social service workers check in, even walk-ins that would come in, they'd fill out an application and try to, try to address what their needs are.
Is this where needs going forward that use the funds in discussion would be allocated or spent?
So, so Hoag has an obligation, and they can, and the members are here from Hoag, that can, that are obligated to provide funding for this type of center. They have to provide a community benefit. And through a needs assessment that they've done to identify what are the needs of the community, they've identified all those services, back one, where they can provide services for children, for the mental health patients, and for families, a wide range of services. And that's what they've developed through their needs assessment. And they have to fund the center, and the center will partner with all these nonprofits, kind of like, almost like a, almost like a broker, that kind of brokers these services.
And the center may or may not be located or operated out of this location. That's to be determined?
So the, the center actually operates there now.
Okay.
It does, correct.
Existing center?
Yes.
Will continue to be the same location, the same operator?
Yes.
With the funds dedicated to that? No.
No, I just want to clarify, yeah, clarify that the center currently exists and Hoag is funding this. The 300,000 a year for the 10 years, the 3 million is a separate stream of funding that will come in for a homeless shelter or that type of service.
Okay. That's, that was my understanding as well, as I was trying to.
But the development agreement, why we highlighted this is there's a commitment in the development agreement that they will continue the funding for this center, separate apart.
Ah, thank you.
Yeah, so that's committed into this in the agreement.
Very good. That makes sense. Yeah, because this was a little bit more news to me. So to give some background on this, I met with the Hoag staff maybe around the election. Yeah. And it was a pleasure to see what Hoag was doing, always great work. And obviously, in October, we had our baby at Hoag. Aside from the ocean view and the nice candlelight dinner they give you on the night of, it was a remarkable experience because of the professionalism and the quality of healthcare that Hoag provides our community. And when I first, when we first were discussing these standard development agreements, those who follow Newport Beach politics that are odd enough to care, I tend to not be a big fan of development agreements. And I wasn't initially a fan of this development agreement proposal because it essentially was the money to be allocated for uses that are community benefits, but I didn't see why Hoag should be contributing to those because they're pretty standard with development agreements for, for builders, not excellent nonprofits that are doing this out of their heart. What I'd like to say now, from, I think, our elected officials and staff did a really good job with this moving forward, is after my conversation with the lobbyists on behalf of Hoag a couple of days ago, because I actually was going to pull, or was considering being against the item, I've learned that Hoag actually wants to do this. And I'll tell you, you know, Hoag is a hero organization. And to want to pay money for Newport Beach to have the pleasure of having so many dedicated servants in our city limits is really unbelievable. So I really want to give my heartfelt thanks to the board and to the institution. And it's a little personal for me as well, because we had some scares, but we had great doctors when our baby was born. But I just, I can't thank Hoag enough. And I, I will, I want to support this, but I also want Hoag to preserve naming rights for this future facility, if one's going to be created, whether it's co-naming or naming rights. So at the appropriate time, I'll offer the motion to approve this item and with a requirement that it's Hoag's option to choose naming or joint naming rights when a location is chosen for these services going forward. And for those, I understand that some individuals in the community are rightly upset about the growing issue of homelessness and there's public safety component as well. The city of Newport Beach really is currently in the position where we are at, we're trying to solve this of our own volition, but also we're being compelled by the federal court under Judge Carter to come up with a solution that would handle this issue, which is a county-wide issue on a sort of a pro-rata basis. So if you have an objection to the generosity of Hoag, or even perhaps the compelling of Newport Beach to twist the arm of Hoag to consider being generous, please understand that the situation that many cities are facing is not entirely just a local issue that we can decide on our own of this dais, but it involves other, other entities that have a lot of legal authority over us and jurisdiction on this matter. So I think this is just a great example where we see just again why Newport Beach is so special and what amazing organizations in the city are willing to do that they don't already do. And I think it also goes back to the original intent of Hoag when it was established, which is essentially to glorify God. So thank you very much for all you do for our community and for this development agreement for the city of Newport Beach.
That's very nice. So Mr. Avery.
Yeah, those of us on the task force for persons who are homeless, we toured this, and I know most of the council did as well, but what I saw was just the, the future of, not just helping us with this issue, but something this community should be doing, and Hoag is leading the way here. And it's a clearinghouse for people with a wide range of issues, but more importantly, just who are looking to better their lives. just who are looking to better their lives, move forward. And HOG has provided this facility that's absolutely spectacular. And what I thought leaving there and knowing that a recent immigrant can come to this country, someone with a health issue can come, you name it, it's sort of covered here in this building with all of these experts and all this help available. It's phenomenal. And it's something that is so important, and Newport Beach being a community that can afford to pay down its unfunded liability much faster than other cities. We also need a lead here, and fortunately for us, we've got HOG in our community to show us, really show us the way. So it's absolutely the right move. And I think the negotiation to sort of figure out how we were going to manage this whole situation, it took a long time. But sometimes things, they take a long time, they reach an excellent result. And this is a case right here, because when we heard about this, after months and months of going back and forth, and to Councilmember Muldoon's point, there certainly is sort of this overriding issue of an excellent nonprofit versus a business coming to town and wanting to build something. And there's something to be said for that. But it's just an incredible result, and something that I feel really good about, and I know the rest of the council does as well. But I was just blown away by their creation here. And it says a lot about the HOG team. I think it says a lot about our community. We're really lucky to have it, and I think we'll be seeing more of these in other communities, because it's so important for the very many people in this community that are struggling to move ahead with their lives, and there's just certain specific things that are holding them back. And this is a way to reach out and bring them in. And the other last thing I'll say about this is, I felt it is a place where there's, you can see the intentional dignity that they are providing for people in the way this facility is laid out, the way it looks, the cleanliness, the whole thing. It's spectacular. And I think people can go in there and feel their privacy is protected, and they can feel that they're valued. It's awesome. So I'm a real fan. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I like, Councilman Muldoon was on the other side of this, but if the board wants it, and they like it, and there's been a lot of work done to this effect, I'm not going to be negative about it. But I would have to go and say that it just makes healthcare costs more. And, you know, I'm glad we're helping the homeless. It's a great cause, but because you contracted disease and now you're helping the homeless, I'm not sure, I think we all need to help the homeless, not just because you got sick. But when we bill you, or HOG bills you, a tiny portion of that bill is going to be this developer's fee. And I don't like that. But I know where there's laws, and you can't get around that. And so you guys have done a great compromise. So I'm glad that you came up with this. But again, if I had my druthers, I would put all that into research to cancer, Alzheimer's, something. But I understand you're also doing all those things. But anyway, like Councilman Avery said, it is a fabulous project. I don't want to be negative about it. And I'm glad our mayor worked hard to come up with a discount. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brenner.
Yes, I'd just like to mention that I also have had seven family members born at HOG, and I also worked for the HOG Foundation. And I found when I was working for the HOG Foundation how much the people in our community adore this hospital. It's just, the support is so broad-based and so deep, and it really indicates how our community feels about this hospital. One of the things I worked on was getting funding for additional nurses, because that was a big thing right then. But I came to understand some of the complexities of the hospital. And I understand Kevin and Duffy having concerns about this, but it's also in the hospital's best interest. They have an obligation to deal with the mentally ill and to deal with the homeless. And so what they're doing is being proactive and finding ways to deal with that in a manner that benefits us, but it also benefits the hospital. So it really is a collaboration between our community and HOG, and it's one of the best possible solutions on how you deal with these measures that are, really seem insurmountable if we didn't all work together.
Very good. Any other comments up here? We'll go out and open the public hearing. Any comments, please come forward.
Mayor Dixon, councilmembers, thank you very much. My name is Sanford Smith. I'm a senior vice president at HOG Hospital. I think a lot has been said about HOG and the service that we provide, and it's great to feel the passion of the council and the community. I think the reason for that is we are a community hospital. We were founded by the community to serve the community, and since 1952, we've been doing that, when the population of Newport Beach was only about 9,000 people. Our services will grow and change. Healthcare has grown and changed pretty significantly in that time period. One of the reasons for the development agreement is that it gives us the ability to be nimble and respond to the changes that are coming in healthcare. And there will be a lot of changes in the next 10 years. We see it transforming very rapidly. Our ability to be nimble to add facilities and provide the services that meet the needs of this community has allowed HOG to be recognized as one of the top hospitals, both in the United States and the world, in Newsweek's latest poll. That's pretty remarkable for a community hospital. It wouldn't be possible without the incredible support of the community, both in terms of its support from the citizens and from philanthropy. So we just really want to thank you, thank city staff. We've been working for about a year and a half now on this development agreement, and Mayor Dixon, for your efforts. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Smith? Well, thank you. Thank you so much. Any other public comments, please come forward.
Hello. Oops. Good evening, Mayor Dixon and fellow council. I just wanted to, oh, my name is Max Johnson, and I am resident of Babel, Pennsylvania. I just wanted to talk tonight and communicate my full support for this project. As the executive just mentioned, I think that the hospital, I actually was born at the hospital. All my siblings and I were born at the hospital. And I think everything that HOG has done since its founding is just spectacular. And I think the staff that they have there, I mean, are just, I mean, world-renowned and amazing, and I think the physicians, specialists, everything about the hospital and what they're doing, and the proactive approach that they're taking to problem-solve homelessness and act as a community partner, and this resolution, I think, is vital. And I think that hopefully it will spark or incentivize other community partners to kind of pick up the shovel and also be a part of this solution. I think that many other healthcare providers or organizations are going to be part of the solution to homelessness. And I think, you know, we have United Way's FACE 2024 report, and I think that there's so many other things that our county is doing to try to resolve this very complicated problem. And I think HOG, what they're offering for a mental health facility is incredibly invaluable. And I think for the young generations and the older generations, mental health is a part of the equation in this very complicated matter. And I thank HOG for offering to do this, and I think Robert Brightsworth and his whole full executive team are just doing amazing, amazing things. And it's really, I think, a sense of pride to be from Newport Beach and to have HOG be here. You know, I'm really proud to have HOG in my backyard, and to see their expansion over the last decade has just been amazing. So I'm voicing my full support for this project, and I think I also wanted to bring in too, I think, the importance of, on the topic of homelessness, the ability to incorporate compassion and empathy. And it is a humanitarian problem, and I think incorporating humanity into this equation is vital. And I think this facility, being that it's for mental health, is a part of that solution. These people that are on the, I think, the ground, interacting with people that are experiencing homelessness, I just think that it's really important to remember, it's not, I think, terming people as transient or homeless, but it's taking those terms out and saying that it's a human being first and foremost. And I'm just really glad to see an organization like HOG taking the initiative to do this. So I'm in full support of this project and look forward to seeing the facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments, please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Since you're being asked to extend the existing agreement, I thought it might have been helpful and for you to have got more of a synopsis of what the state or status of the current development agreement is. For the first many years, the annual review of that took place before the city council. And for about the last five years, that's been happening at the zoning administrator meetings with very little attendance, except from some of the people impacted by HOG who live next to it. The annual report for most development agreements mentions not just the development that has happened and has left, but also the status of the various benefits that have been promised, whether they've been fulfilled or not, what the status is. Would have been helpful for you to see that. Regarding the substance of this, and particularly the promise of the $3 million over 10 years, this is a really trivial point. The actual agreement is on page 17-14, and throughout it, it refers to partners that might be designated, with an S, partners plural. In the very middle of it, it refers to partners singular, so you might want to correct that to make it consistent. And I would also point out that the Homeless Task Force, who's going to be designating the partners for this homeless shelter, which is not the thing we've been talking about, has so far only met once, and their whole existence, they're supposed to sunset at the end of next year. This is kind of anticipating that their solution for Newport Beach is to actually build a homeless shelter somewhere and designate an operator. Should it turn out that that's not what they recommend, does the city need to consider some backup plan for what they want this money to be used for? And then more generally, despite Mr. Smith's presentation, I'm really, like I think to the council members, a little mystified why HOG even wants a development agreement. It's not like I can foresee any Newport Beach City Council voting down any development that they request. And like Councilman Duffield, this might seem a little radical, but if their operating profit and charitable contributions are generating so much more money that they're wondering what to do with, that money could be used to benefit directly what they do in terms of lowering the cost of the medical services that are provided to the community. And that would seem to me like a much more direct benefit, and I don't think it needs to be tied to a benefit or development agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back up here. I just want to add my comments to support HOG and their benevolent spirit to our community. And I think what this agreement represents is a very innovative solution for a problem that is endemic in our community, certainly in Orange County and Newport Beach. Individually, collectively, we feel an obligation to do something in support of, to support the homeless in our community. We do have approximately 61 homeless, as the Mayor Protem pointed out. I think this is very clever and innovative by HOG, because they are dealing with homeless emergency medical situations on a daily basis, and their emergency room, oftentimes they're filled to capacity with homeless people. And this is a way that the city of Newport Beach knows that we probably need to, according to federal Judge Carter, have a permanent facility, homeless structure in our community. Now, we haven't acted on that yet. We are anticipating that that is the direction we are going, subject, of course, to the homeless committee and the task force's recommendation. So marrying these two, to provide from day one the services that will be needed onsite on the premises of such a facility in Newport Beach, that it's tied to HOG, in addition to the ancillary services that are provided through the Melinda Hogue Smith Center, is just a very creative, innovative approach to dealing with the multitude of issues that a homeless person needs to be treated, humanly treated with. So I'm very pleased that the development agreement on the business side of that discussion ensures that HOG has the entitlement rights to develop this 400,000 square feet of medical facilities, or whatever it is, sees fit within the development agreement and the general plan to do that. And as Mr. Smith pointed out, probably in the next 10 years during the life of this agreement, we will see some important new physical structures there that will be, again, serving important healthcare needs in our community. So I just want the community to know too, that development agreement gives confidence and takes away any risk that HOG will have any future council that could come in and say, "We don't want them to build, we want to take that square footage for affordable housing," or something. And HOG will have that, those entitlement rights preserved and protected through this development agreement, and we are grateful for that. So it's a pleasure to give HOG the opportunity to be recognized this evening. I'd like, I've commented to you in the past, that we should do a study session on all the many, many public services that you're providing to our community and beyond, right here in Newport Beach, that makes us so proud for what HOG does. So I want to thank you, Mr. Smith, for coming together on this agreement so that we can better serve all the people in our community. And before I close, Mr. Muldoon, would you like to, did you want to add a comment? Go right ahead, please.
Thank you. So I'd like to approve staff's report, and with the added addition that it would have co-naming rights. Now, if you followed at all the Angels of Anaheim story, you know that co-naming rights does not necessarily mean you won't share it with some other entity. It could be the entity of Newport Beach, of HOG, or some variation of it.
The Muldoon Center.
Yeah, it could be the Muldoon Center. My grandpa's the Muldoon Center down in Mission Viejo. But I don't want my name, as a matter of fact, that's one reason why I want to do this, no politician can put their name on it, it's going to be HOG-affiliated. But that's what the co-naming stems from, and I'm open to debate if someone wants to discuss that, by the way. But that's my motion.
All right. Do we have a second?
Just clarification real quick.
Sure, go ahead.
I'll second it. I just want to make sure I'm understanding the name. It sounds fine. I mean, I don't know whether HOG will want to put its name on the building, have someone else put its name on the building. It's just worth mentioning that eventually, if we get to the point of having a shelter here, which is possible, and it's also possible, we come up with a regional solution with someone else. So there are going to be probably a number of partners involved in this process when we're talking sheltering. So I have no issue at all with making sure that HOG is intimately involved with whatever name gets put on the, gets put on a building. So if we had it maybe a little bit more open, where we, the development agreement assured that HOG would be involved in the naming rights, I'd have no problem with that. I'm just trying to figure out what the scope's going to be. I can also say Newport will, has a fund available to it that's in the seven figures that we would be able to put in ourselves as well. So there will probably be a number of funding opportunities between us and then also other organizations. So in terms of the naming process, you just want, you want to make sure HOG is intimately involved and we're not naming it after ourselves. Because I agree.
I think we all agree.
Well, I was sort of tongue-in-cheek in that one. But I think if we show up with $3 million in some amount from our fund, and it's a partner city, they're not going to have a problem with HOG being somewhere in the name.
If they'd want to be, I don't, you know...
Yeah, exactly. If HOG wants to be, yeah. I know that they're in the business of naming things after people, but that doesn't mean that they want their name on it. Good question.
Well, we appreciate the invitation... Well, we appreciate the invitation for the recognition. I think since we don't know what the solution is yet, and since HOG is a family name of the HOG family, it would be premature, I think, for us to commit and to accept that offer. I think we would prefer to wait to sort of see what the solution is that the homeless task force identifies and whether or not that's appropriate. But we would certainly like to be involved and look forward to that continued discussion.
So does it work to, I don't want to step on your motion.
Well, I said originally that it would be at their option.
Okay.
So it still would be at their option. But I'm very flexible, you could say.
Let's just, maybe just make sure that HOG is involved in whatever naming process we come up with?
Yeah, and if it's painted like a zebra color or bright pink, maybe they won't want it on their name.
All right. I'll second that. Thank you.
Okay. And I just want to say, Mr. Smith, as long as you're standing up there, to please convey to HOG's Board of Directors and Mr. Braithwaite our gratitude for coming to this good conclusion or beginning of a partnership, really. It's the beginning of a new relationship with HOG that we're very proud to participate with you in. So thank you. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Muldoon and a second by Mayor Protem. Shall we vote?
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2019-12. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach amending a development agreement between the city of Newport Beach and HOG Memorial Hospital Presbyterian. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Very good. Madam Clerk?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motion for reconsideration? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you and have a good evening.
Mayor, I know you just adjourned. Could I just make a brief comment, sorry to keep you just because of the significance of this council meeting tonight? This is the last council meeting for our fire chief, Chip Duncan.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, he cleverly has his last day as July 22nd, which is a Monday right before our next council meeting.
So we're back in session here. Oh, my gosh. Well, there is an event for him.
There's an event next week on Thursday on July 18th.
So we won't let you get away.
Yeah, so we'll do our goodbyes, but I just wanted to say, congratulations to Chip. And I can't hide that I'm a little jealous that this is his last council meeting.
Oh, my gosh. Well, we should have done something about, anyway. So one of many honors that we'll be saying to our fire chief, Chip Duncan, who will be retiring in two weeks. And we're gonna be very sad. But our department has been led by a very capable fire chief for the last few years and throughout your whole career, your role in our fire department. So I won't give my speech now, but it's nice to salute you. One of many times we will be saluting him. So thank you. So we are adjourned. Thank you very much.